No, no. Girls aren't that, um, that privous. All right, you're on. Oh, my God, they are over. All right, it is six o'clock, so we are gonna get started with our June sixteenth Select Board Meeting. Um, you started recording?
I didn't.
All right. I'd like to start by looking at the warrants. I'd like to make a motion that we approve payroll number one oh five for nineteen thousand, six hundred and eighty-nine dollars and seventy-two cents. Do I have a second? All in favor?
All right.
I'd like to move that we approve accounts payable number one oh six for one thousand nine hundred sixty-four dollars. Yes, I have them backwards.
We have them backwards.
Yes. That accounts, uh, payroll for one thousand nine hundred sixty-four dollars and fifty-two cents. Do I have a second? It is, it is Monday. Well, yes, it can be when you look at the next one.
Well, that's, yeah.
Excellent. So I'd like to amend, um, we're gonna start over again.
Okay.
Uh, I'd like to move that we approve accounts payable one oh five for nineteen thousand six hundred eighty-nine dollars and seventy-two cents. Do I have a second?
Okay, Kim, second.
All in favor? Like to move that we accept payroll number one oh six for one thousand nine hundred sixty-four dollars and fifty-two cents. Do I have a second? All in favor? All right, I'd like to move that we accept payroll number one oh seven for twelve thousand three hundred seventy-nine dollars and seventy-five cents. Do I have a second? All in favor? And this payroll is specifically for the fire department, their quarterly amounts. Uh, which has been taken away from one oh eight for one hundred and fourteen thousand three hundred eighty-three dollars and ninety-nine cents. Do I have a second? All in favor?
All right.
And probably everybody knows by now that is RSU monthly bill and also includes a transfer station this month. I'd like to move that we accept payroll number one oh nine for twenty-one thousand five hundred and twenty-six dollars and ninety-two cents. Do I have a second?
Second. All right.
And that is, um, the final payroll for the year that includes all of the staff, um, all of us, uh, the election folk, anybody else that was thrown in there, um, so that, that, um, actually wanted to pay everybody at the same time, so that is why that bill is so much. I'd like to move that we accept the minutes of, um, June second, twenty twenty-five Select Board Meeting. Do I have a second? All in favor?
All right.
We can sign it here. I did. I don't think I did. Okay, yep, yep, we'll initial it later. I saw it. Yeah, cuz I commented on it. All right, uh, citizens issues, and we're gonna start since we have audience here. We have, um, some that have contacted us, um, in the past couple of weeks. Uh, Chris, do you have a citizens issue?
Yes, one to continue to step into the business, let people know where I was.
Perfect, perfect, yes, cuz we had a June fifteenth, um, date, yep, so would you like to update us on where you are?
So the last I saw, um, you were working on the, um, the yellowish, um,
The portable garage?
Uh-huh, is that finished? Last I saw it was.
Have. Mm-hmm. The third one I had ordered to replace this, that's the one that must have been sure. The whole part of property.
Yeah, yeah.
Ripped out my anchors, the whole nine yards. So this one, the diner, I've got concrete blocks and extra string repelling hopefully, plus two my sticks and two my hands, through every fact. So with that, I'll take you keep everything there.
Yeah.
Cuz the mighty little, it only hits, that'd be two miles per hour. I had it much, but it's, like, oh, my gosh.
It'll hurt, thanks, Susan.
Yeah, um, I appreciate your update, and as I said, as you know, I do walk by there and walk still. Yeah, I did not, I, I haven't been there since the day that you were, um, you had somebody helping you and you were putting the, yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah, yeah, well, we appreciate it, and we will continue to monitor that, as you know, um, but we definitely appreciate, um, one, we appreciate you coming forth and sharing what you've done, and, um, since our CEO is here, um, you know, we'll, as, you know, as we said in our letter, we'll periodically be checking that, and, and, you know, I tend to walk down there, so I, I, I will check it as well, but, um, we do appreciate, uh, Gary, you missed it, uh, Chris said he's down to twenty pallets? He got rid of about two hundred, you had, you said you had two hundred and fifty?
Oh, yeah, hopefully.
Yeah, yeah, and you can actually build a boardwalk all the way to the, uh, the ferry landing with all those.
It's heavy, he's got, I think he wore like seventy-eight of those, but one by five.
Mm-hmm.
And she, she wants to put three more, ready, set.
Oh, cool, that's a good use.
Nice, yeah, yeah. Yeah, yeah, I know you had some wet area. Yeah, actually, then they did a very nice job of, um, using the pallets to, um, to make like, like a regular boardwalk, nice curved, but we need, needed to clean that up a little bit, so thank you, Chris.
Yeah.
Um, all right.
I see that you got one of the.
Okay.
Beating on roads.
Mm-hmm.
I had a, I borrowed a friend's radar, and I had a couple of you go like, we'll start.
And that road, it is, it is really a one-way road. And I'm probably have ten.
So I measured what it would take to go from one trip to the next, complete the whole nine yards, and I had probably twenty-five or thirty people that regularly over fifty miles an hour.
Wow. Cuz when I, I, even when I walk there, it's like I'm, I'm conscious of which side I'm, yeah, live there, where these people go on.
There's, I just see like four and five vehicles that go back and forth eight or ten times a day on the days that I've been home, and I'm like,
It's not a big road, it's not a long road, yeah.
And it's like, it must have been, whether it turns, whether you can go to the medical, was like almost twenty minutes after you saw them, it wasn't medical. Usually she goes and she's like five minutes, last one, back up the road, cuz I told my US Postal Service, they're like, I'll do. And I'll say that they've already been spoken to, and they've sent out complaints, a lot of the people. So, but it's just, it's. It doesn't matter. If the days that I've had off are basically just sitting by, I find it looks right up through a few windows, I mean, it's, and the thing, yeah, some of this are actually, uh, commercial landscapers.
Hmm.
They go in with those big treaders and tops, and it's like, you can hear them.
Rumble, yeah.
And they have the beels, and it's like, yeah, they're gonna.
Mm-hmm.
My mom's so ballistic, as you probably seen.
Mm-hmm, when I walk by, yep, yep.
I mean, I just looked, bar call is on, and pop, cuz they've just been getting out of control.
Yeah.
And the point you asked, I delivered right, you know, like, they sound so ferocious, I said, well, come here, and I took them in the house, and they went, and they ate in the corner. I said, leave them all, they're ferocious animals.
Yeah. I know roads, uh, speed on the roads are an issue, as you know, we had the, it, it, we can't seem to control it on them.
We were working on it, and I knew what he's talking about, there's maybe two, three people, talks, and we're down there.
Mm-hmm.
So there shouldn't be a lot of them, and that's, you know, the other traffic, just out of the way, here's what I care.
Mm-hmm.
Well, I'm just concerned for people like you, cuz I see you out walking, and the other day, I've had a couple of the people who walk, I don't know them. I've tried to go out and catch one, but I never seen catch them one night, like, they're almost passed, they're on the cell phones, and they have headphones on, and today, the one that had her cell phone, and was looking at, almost walking into me, and I was like, I was trying to grow, which wasn't paying attention on the matter, they hit on the horn, and from even the bottom, so I just want to stop in time.
Yeah, I think it's crazy, anybody that has, uh, headphones on, especially, you know, I, I get off a main road as quickly as I can, and I either have to go to, to dog it or, greenleaf, it's like one of those two, but there's that distance that I have to do on main road, and it is insane for anybody to have headphones on. It's like, I, I'm listening well ahead, and I know to get off the road, so, uh,
Mm-hmm. Like, I was hearing them going down the main road, and I hear them coming down, and I hear them, I'm gonna dog off the road, it's crazy.
Yeah, probably one of the worst things that Jim did was to, um, get that road paved.
Just gonna say, I don't know, but probably.
Mm-hmm, yeah, and I remember, yeah.
We could email, like, and, you know, they will, whatever, what can I request, or be sent a photo, so.
Especially if we had a timeframe where we could say, you know, it'd be great if you can, and, and I know you just said there isn't a timeframe.
Those are right.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Even if anything can be considered, uh, the guys who drive them, these landscapers, they're almost, they're very, very, about the same time, so it's, you know.
So if you sort of can watch a little bit and have a sense and email us, and, and then we can contact the sheriff.
Yeah, if the people living down there. They, they live in, out there, they, all they will. Retired, I don't know. So they're retired.
We're in a hurry to get there.
But the other thing about good roads and speeding is, some of these people don't have a lot of road views. But, uh, cuz I've seen plenty of that, too, you know, it's like, if you really knew what the repair bill was, you're trading, you might think differently, or drive differently.
And it's such a curvy road, though, I, I mean, I, I know, cuz when I, just when I'm walking, cuz I've got a lot of time to look, it's like there are lots of blind spots on that road, it's, it's not a long road. Mm-hmm, yeah, yeah, yeah.
I don't know if the bear's done seeing on the road, but I know it's high across, pretty, you know, these guys, they're it.
Yeah, yeah, like, where are they going?
We need four seconds early.
Mm-hmm, yep. Yep, and if you're retired, you got no place to go anyway, so there shouldn't be any hurry, so, yeah, if you can get a sense for, um, timeframe, we can.
Obviously, if I can get that, my family on the first day, now that I left, part of them.
Good.
The other, we still, we low on roads now.
Exactly, but go ahead. A couple of other citizens issues, so first I wanna ask, anybody else that you have, nope, you're just here visiting, thank you, great. Um, so another issue that came up, and this is sort of altogether, um, was, um, somebody mentioned, they lived down the island, and they said that, um, they had counted the number of road signs that were missing, and I did let them know that, um, you were aware of it, but I would bring it up again today. Um, there were a lot of damaged road signs, and, um, and I know you've contacted DOT, and I, I don't know if there's any update or anything that you can provide us on that. And related to that was another road sign that was, um, and it wasn't actually a road sign, it was a, um, it was a mailbox, I think, um, somebody on the, on the main road, um, had a, had a camera out, um, on the main road, and somebody came and took out the batteries so that they wouldn't be seen destroying things, so, um, they did contact the sheriff, I asked the individual to come in today, to share what the sheriff had to say, that person has not come in yet, and I haven't heard back, um, to know whether the sheriff did anything or, or what happened with that, but it seems to be a lot of issues with road signs, and then now people getting, taking out the camera batteries so that, and they're not.
But last fall.
Right, right.
Uh, yes, I, I had the note now, once they stole the, the camera battery, then they took the flag off the mailbox, or they, they broke it. It's like.
I'm looking at it, that they thought there was a bunch of kids out with the old, throwing baseball at us.
Hmm, mm-hmm.
Cuz I noticed that, that the real time, and it really got hit.
Hmm, I remember that last fall, we had problems, yep.
One, and one, yeah.
So it, it quieted down with it, with the nice weather, I guess, it's, you know, gonna start.
Down here. And the ones that I fixed up, you know, for the state, there was, we had a whole mine of rock, and of course, it's, I, I had some, and it definitely, it broke the top bolts, it was strong there, and that's what I fixed it.
Yeah, I noticed some of my houses completely, it's been gone for months, yeah. And then they come and do it again, yeah.
We should encourage people to set up game cans, we can't all, the, the, the.
Yep, well, in this case, in, in this case, um, somebody took the batteries out. Right, 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 and I. Yeah, so that, yeah, yeah. You know, you do that very well. Thank you, Melanie, for that, um, I will follow up with this individual and find out what the sheriff had to say about it, um, but, but, um, that, yeah, that, that was one of the issues I put him up, um, and the third thing, which isn't an issue, which is a nice change, is, uh, somebody emailed me, and, um, asked if there was any interest in having a carved wooden boat at the ferry landing that says Westport Island on it. Um, this is actually, um, Jeannie, who does carved boats, and so she was asking us whether we would want something at the ferry landing, and I said I would let the board know, and, um, any thoughts and feedback?
Nice, I just don't know.
Where?
What it looks like, or what.
Yeah, hang on, I got pictures.
She's just a little flat once she has those X's and O's.
I'm not sure exactly where we would put it, but, um.
Put it up on the side of the pier, right by the boat launch, tell everyone it's twenty-four feet long.
Where would we put it?
On the pier, like, if you're at the boat.
Oh, I like that, like, when you're going to walk to the, um, yeah, actually, either side, yeah, okay.
But where nobody can reach up and steal it?
I will text her and let her know. Some, maybe they'll deal with that instead of the, uh, yeah, um, so.
Thanks, Jamie.
Can I, um, can I go ahead and ask, uh, tell Jeannie, yes, it's okay to do that? Okay, I will do that, I'll contact her.
Nothing illegal about us accepting that, right? Good, yeah. A community member and.
Yep. The three of us are getting it, it's something for the town.
Yeah, good, thank you.
Okay. Now, we'll go to roads.
Jim, can you come up next to, so Charlotte can hear you, please?
One small thing to say.
Uh-oh.
Everybody's in March, September, potentially, September twenty-fourth, twenty-fifth, and twenty-sixth on their calendar, especially if they live on Lower West Door Road or Lower Baker. Because there's gonna be some activity. We can expect delays. Some of them may not be, so.
September.
Why?
Well, just, you know, if you're pulling out of like, protection room, and they're going by, you're gonna have to wait for them to go by and roll it, before you can turn left and walk back.
Yep.
You know, so that to be.
That's September?
Uh, no, September, no, no, June.
All right, I'm like, I'm like, wow, what happened?
I was gonna say, good, there's plenty of time to warn people, cuz it's.
Okay, we all, this is next week.
We'll need to post something, and, um, I know Dee Dee put something on the, um,
Yeah.
Definitely put on the sign, too. Will they be doing? Will they be doing one and then the other, or do they do a layer and a layer and a layer and a layer?
If I'm wrong.
Yeah.
They start running the second, on the second day, while they paid the first one, cuz he don't talk to three ladies, so.
So I think with the new sign especially, we can get it narrowed down, you can communicate that to April, she can like be even more specific about, today is West Shore, tomorrow, you know, so like.
This was, just talking about it last week, you don't want denominators and all the nature, so, uh, you know. So that's what we're looking at.
One, it would be good to post it for several days, I think, and I think, yeah, make sure you, you bring it up on Saturday, because you will have a, a, quite a few people there as well, and I think the more that we can announce it, um, you know, people want the roads, we all want the roads, right, but then the minute, we have, there are people working on the roads, everybody complains. But just let people know, yep, yep, leave early, yep, so that is June twenty-fourth through the twenty-sixth, okay. All right, days from now. All right, any committee reports?
Nope. Uh, do you want me?
Yes, yes.
So, uh, on Friday of this past week, I met with some folks from the Maine Historic Preservation, um, group, and they were lovely, there were three of them, one is a actual employee, and then two of them were interns, yep, that were, that are here for the summer, um, and Chris Malley was there, and Dick Barker was there, and we looked at the Old Town Hall, and it was really kind of fun to watch people that are like into it, get all excited, you know, like, when we're, especially we head up into the attic, and you look at the structure and the way it was built, and it's pinned, and it's this, and they're up there taking their pictures, and they go, oh, why did they have this little slot here, oh, they did this, they did that, like, they, they're actually figuring out which pieces of wood got put in for second, third, fourth, which is kind of fun, um, so we looked at the whole building, we looked at the structural problems that it has, and they were very encouraging, which is great, like, we had thought that, you know, in terms of monies, that there is not monies available, but they said absolutely not, there definitely are, and there's grants to be had, and that, that, both of those buildings kind of, like, they lit up, they're like, this is exactly the kind of stuff that these grants are made for, so, then we got into the current, um, situation with the federal monies, and they said that's the only kind of like, what if right now, there were six employees in Augusta that were federally funded, that are all gone, so they said they were the ones that administered the grant, so like, the money is still there, and there was a referendum last year for ten million dollars for Maine historic buildings, that money is still there, and it's not clear how far away they are from being able to redevelop a staff that can do the grants, but they guided us very well, they're gonna send me all kinds of details and information on it, um, so that we don't miss any marks, and that we've got, uh, everything in line. That being said, you know, there's a lot of discussion about the compromise between the use of old buildings and the preservation of old buildings. So when we talk about, well, do we insulate it, do we not insulate it, do we heat it, do we not, do we keep it open all winter, do we not, there's, there's a lot of that that still needs to get worked out, but some of the things that, if it was purely being preserved for the preservation, you wouldn't do some things, but you have to compromise because we don't wanna have just an old building that's not getting used, so like, we talked about insulation, and one of their things was, instead of trying to insulate in the attic, the next time that the roof is ready to be replaced, which Chris kind of thinks maybe five to seven years more on the curve, we would go over the roof with insulation, foam insulation, and then re-roof over that, so you insulate, but you wouldn't capture moisture like you would if we insulated above the big room, and so there was just a lot of that sort of stuff, we talked about gutters, a historic building typically, you wouldn't wanna put gutters on, but this one doesn't have any overhang, which is why we have all the moisture problem in the wall, so they're like, you know, we'll, we'll forego the no gutters, it's not gonna, and they essentially said, if you do anything that can be taken off, then it doesn't count against you. Like, that makes sense, right? Like, okay, well, we put gutters on because we don't want water running down the inside of the walls anymore, so, yes, it takes away a little bit from the historic piece, but it makes our building functional, and it doesn't count, like, it doesn't degrade it, because it's removable.
Um, so we talked about that, they have actual charts on figuring the outflows of gutters and how much water is there, and so they're gonna provide us with all of that information, so it was really a great, very positive, you know, it was fun to be with them, cuz they're into it, um, and they had a, oh, yeah, you know, one of the guys is a grad student in South Carolina, at Clemson University, getting his graduate degree in historic preservation of buildings, and he's up here doing this internship, and then he's also gonna work with less fossil for a period this summer, and then he goes back for one more year of school, and, like, yeah, so, yeah. Adds that WCA has been starting to, to try to figure out again, what are we gonna do with the church? So it happened that Dick was interested, he'd heard about this, and he, so that they could also, they were more than. It's like, what are we gonna do with that, so it's, I think it's great to be looking at both buildings at the same time.
This, this fascinating, in the church, on the back of all the pews, and on one of the cabinets in the back of the room, it's, the grain of the wood is faux painted, and they're, they're down there with their flashlights, oh, look at this line, you know, like, they were so into it, yeah, I mean, I look, oh, yeah, it looks like wood, oh, no, it's fake. Like, they, it's, but they said it's some of the best example of that era where that was done as a decorative piece, and like, like, they just picked up on that, like, oh, wow. Um, so, yes, the church, too, fascinated a totally different construction style with the church, so that was interesting, that, and then they talked about, there's another building very similar to our church, like, in Georgetown, or there's some, another town pretty close that, that they have looked at as well, that, that it's like, almost like, okay, the same people had to have filmed these two things, so, anyway, so all good news, um, I haven't gotten the report yet, cuz it was just Friday, but.
Maybe you can go for grants and support and, or, yeah.
So, good resource.
Yeah, definitely.
Yeah, well, that's all good. Yeah. Well, that's all good. It's really I got. I'm waiting for Saturday. Praying that the townspeople agree to let the right house go away. I mean, from us. Then we can move forward with the other things that we want to do, but we're kind of holding back on some things right now to see where, where we, where we land on Saturday, but.
Right now, just a couple of things that are happening. So we're talking to Slackboard business. And one, we have a consent agreement created by the CEO. And it's for Colin Schmel and Gary, I'm thrilled that you're here. Do you want to talk a little bit about?
Yeah. So that people know.
Yeah.
So. He took the word of the tree guy. And so trees within the city of Florence, Florence, John Air, were taken down. Um, he's going to be, anyway. He approached the town, asked the town, he just kind of took the tree that I work for. And so now, you know, Gary went down there and now there's a whole plan to, uh, leave that as the property, the shoreland zone as it should be. I think it's really nice of him to be willing to just hold area, even though this most recent issue is three twenty four, three twenty. Um, he sold the area, he's probably a career, but it's been nothing. What is that? Lower, oh my god, skeleton. Then it gets sort of transformed to the shoreland zone.
So Gary, anything to add to that? And I have pictures here.
Um, I mean, it was a, it was a pretty straightforward attempt to try to address that, Randy. Feeling with you, uh, so I'm sure any of yours. And as, as you said, he tries professional strength to create a solution. Um, and the solution was one that should have been done. It was made aware of that.
All about law. And if anything is going to be done, it just can't hurt to reach out and ask.
I'd be more than happy to answer the question and you'll, you'll get off on the right foot. I mean, I feel badly for this gentleman. But the shore is always super, super protected.
Taken very seriously. So people need to know, you just seventy five feet, high watermark, right? Right. Is you, you can't do much with it unless, you know, you you check out what it is you're allowed to do. Yeah. Uh, you never know.
The 13th of 1971 is when that law came into effect. So kind of feeling like people should know.
Sometimes people have a question that we're just not as, we don't follow through sometimes with with the rules and regulations are. And we did not do any fines for this law. But as we talked last week, you know, you said this, the fact of what he has to go through to replace all the trees that that came down. The fact that he had to, there's a very extensive. Um, but I'll set it up anyway. Um. It's very colorful. Um, that shows just all the, the work that needs to be done of all the places that where trees have to be replaced. But just getting to this point costs a lot for the individual who. It's like, let me go in my backyard and dig up some five inch saplings. And do you want to talk about just like what he wants to do?
And one of the criteria is that I'm dealing with the point is have to be and in order to be a platform, it has to be.
So the, the town has not imposed any kind of fine, but you know, also if he's standing, he thought it wasn't a tent town. But it is important to know that we do have these ordinances and, and, and we will follow them as best we can. So sometimes you don't find them quickly enough, but as in this case, so please work.
Is it the guy who lives here full time or the part?
He's full time.
How it was a new property to them. Their whole front garden. The house is built on a bottom edge of a pretty steep hill. And the water just comes in and goes around both sides of the house. And the whole front garden. He got a little bit of a storm, it's hurting right in the water. He hires a reason behind it. I'm already. So we're going to have to get the water changed, I think.
Is that any permit? Uh, this, this fellow knows.
They just want to make the money and, yeah.
Yeah. I, I've dealt with the individual before. So, yeah. Yeah. So I would like to move that we sign this consent agreement and forward it on to the, to Colin Schmel, the landowner. And do I have a, well, in favor?
All right.
So.
Thanks for, thanks for your work on this one. That was a lot. Sixteenth day of. I'm sorry I missed your session with the ladies the other day.
Probably say. Yes, down there because landowner will sign up here.
April, do you want to scan this first before you give it to, or we'll send it on to?
Okay. Yep. Yeah. Yeah. And this is actually, this is the whole thing. It's brutal. Let's go with it. Do you want to skip this one?
As much as I know, the lady's having a pretty commission to develop our.
So, so basically, when you look at the tax nets for the town, on the left there, you have all the different layers. You can, you can look at.
Now, the, um, so my son has, you can, you know, things. It's got one more, um, money.
Look at your property.
He's going to hear the.
So, um. Basically, he was just asking if there was an interest.
When we do their, their yearly updates where they said, usually just.
Right. So we're thinking that that would be a, a good idea for people who are interested in that. Have that as an added, uh, added thing. Free people out.
So it's a projection. Doesn't mean it's going to happen. But we do have some properties on the island that are going to be affected if in fact it comes to fruition. So.
Yep. Well, if I were. But we have to look at how far. So why don't we just talk, talk some more to Dennis and find out exactly what, how long the projection is? Like it's a hundred years versus fifty years, twenty years. There that, the, the, the right house, you know, we've already seen it's, it's hitting. Um, and so that projection isn't that far out. So it really depends.
They're already there, already available.
That's really the question. It, it's something that's public knowledge. Third thing is we received a complaint about the establishment of a business that didn't have a site.
Uh, this came from somebody that is on a property department. And he has got to look into it. So it's up to the proper property.
And we have already talked to the CEO and asked him to look at it. Um, and have you had a chance? I know Lisa went and, and.
Flag your board, uh, explain to them the same plan. I think it's comprised of some of the biggest hurdle on air. My team, they're going to grow that they're, and they were proposing to upgrade the wall. Maybe this, which means the whole program upgrade your home, we have to net for it. First of all, it was like they didn't want to spend the resources. Someone just, they, uh, post it, I'm going to have to case, uh, they, uh, a building for personal storage. Part of the permitting process that is clear, it clears the, only thing it can do is, you know, put it for public then commercial weeks, you know, have to be fine. Thank you. Sometimes that was the plan.
And I saw, I saw today. The, the guy that is there, this is business who, so it doesn't necessarily.
We did look at the permit today and we did see that you had put in there that it was conditional. And we were wondering what the conditional was. So it sounds like the conditional is that it is for personal use. So I, I think the thing to do is continue to monitor it and, um, and just see. Have other issues that are sort of similar where we just need to watch to. Okay. So, yeah, we, we try to, anything that comes to us is that the select board respond to it. So thank you for following up with that. Uh, now with some easier stuff, we actually have Judy Pagan, who is willing to step up to serve as the RSU Board Member.
Mr. Dupree. What a time when you said of that, but it's not, so we couldn't even have on a, um, on the ballot system. But the move that we appoint.
Thankfully. But when she did go, there was a meeting last week and she did go. Uh, she did participate in. Um, on the glass so you can see things. It always helps. By the way, Judy's background, she does have a background in education as well. So she's done a lot of different things, but I think she'll be perfect and hopefully she'll run next year. All right. Um, one of the things that I, I.
We've lost Charlotte.
Okay. So maybe we'll go over stage or anywhere.
Yes.
Um, maybe the technology or whatever. One of the things that. Down to, um, we have a, another person who's interested in joining our Property Maintenance Committee. Um, which as any of you have gone to any of the buildings, you know, we need a lot of help. Um, so this would be a great help for, um, for Kim. We found out he's got a lot of background in, in carpentry and electrical and in, you know, all sorts of things. So his name is Trevor Harris and he's new actually, just coming on the, to the island. So I'd like to move that we appoint Trevor Harris to the Property Maintenance Committee. Second. Exactly. Uh, I'm going to. Um. We have to sign, um. A petition for Claude, or we have to accept text.
Long story, but we're not gonna have the account. We need to put the money.
I don't want to mention anything. So delete the last two minutes of that recording. Yeah, we don't need to do it. We can't do it yet. Right, right, I remember her saying that, so come here in two weeks and you'll hear the rest of the story.
We'll have some more to it.
Uh, right, and I think we have to have two of these, so we have, uh, next, we have the Mid Coast Humane. Animal Shelter Contract that we have to do every year and it's based on the number of people who are on the island. And this, every town has to, to deal with that, so, um. It's a, just a yearly thing that we have to deal with, so, um. And I don't remember what, um, whether it has the amount here, I think we've already paid. Uh, one thousand one hundred twenty-eight dollars and eighty-three cents. Its fee is based on the rate of one point five seven per capita. Years ago when we got the new, um. Census. So I'd like to move that we accept this contract with the Mid Coast Humane Society. Do I have a second? All in favor?
I, I just think, I want to point out that the last part of the contract is the things that they won't do. It's kind of funny.
Yeah, I, I will say that I have had to go. To them before to ask for help when, um, I was having to deal with. Even though a regular person wouldn't have been able to. Take a dog there because they were full. This was in Edgecombe, which is still part of the whole Humane Society. I have contacted them and they said that they're always full for towns. So that at any point in time that they were home, that we have a ten mile federal, which that the, it's the only means to get taken around. Are you the witness here? It's. That says it. Doesn't it?
Some new pronoun.
I'm just looking and signing things I'm supposed to sign, but one of the lines says. By so and so, name, and then it said it's, I T S. I'm not sure what to put there. Wow. There's gonna be a lawyer around here. Okay, so that's taken care of. Schedule, Pidium is in town. Um, I know they visited Jim in West Cassett, but they came to my house the other day. I was thrilled because I've been meaning to talk to them. Um. And we said they'll be at my house to. Do it, whatever they need to do, all for free, and, um, the price will be. I've been looking, um, um, on Facebook to see. Why he came to my house is because I had consolidated. And it is very to be, um, used, and it is not the entire island, and as we mentioned before. Was not part of the grant when they got a, a grant to put in, um, all the, the fiber optics. But for some reason, they decided to be nice to us and they have, um, taken care of about two-thirds of the island. I don't remember exactly where it's. So looking to the fire department, including Greenleaf, um, so. And then they have now, I think, you have, um, this on here. They're not gonna have a great store, so just, they're not gonna mind because I had, um, consolidated. Um, but very nice, um, conversation and, like I said, they, they have me. So that, I think is a, a good news and I, I know some people had already changed on some things. Yeah, I know, they're, they're in shock that I don't have half the things, but it's like, nope, I just need internet. Um, we're just gonna jump real quick, like, to the July meeting schedule and then we'll come back to, um. We talked about, um, the issue and we said we were gonna hold on. It's fine to me. And we'll continue to have our weekly, um. Work sessions and those have been on Tuesdays and those are always open to the public.
Yeah, they've been on Wednesdays and Thursdays.
You haven't been able to make it, so we thought we needed to go back to Tuesday.
No, you don't have to go back to Tuesday for me.
But we're meeting tomorrow, which is Tuesday.
We are, but that's just because Josh, right? Tomorrow's a special one.
You believe we even meet every? We do, we, we actually get along quite well.
Thursday's forty-six.
It's not just you, Jim. Okay, so the. Yeah, yeah, September twenty-fourth through the twenty-seventh.
That was the good one. My, wow, what happened? That's really. That's really putting it off.
So I'd like to go back.
We're getting close to the, the grant to study, uh, two-level rise and disclosure impact to our infrastructure. Infrastructure meaning causeways, roads, and private homes and older buildings that are outshore. So we've, uh. With a lot of help from Lincoln County Regional Planning Commission. Uh, we've created a model that looks at various de-levelized scenarios. In, in concert with what the state guidelines are. And it will allow, if we put it on a tax map. It'll allow residents to be able to look at their property if they have any concerns. And they can see whether or not the, uh, two-level or maybe the most certain impact is. Of the damage threat to them that they've been planning for. And, uh. The, uh, Lincoln County folks have created, uh. Can you have an L file? And we have many K M L files that have loaded on our G I S tax map site. Years ago, and most recently the, the history, uh, layer, so this will be one more layer. And when you click on the layer, then within the layer, there'd be a number of different ski level scenarios. And people could click on if they're interested in that particular scenario. In order to guide those things, my, my head will be prepared a little. Couple of days down your street, that can be, also someplace else on the top west side, so people will know how to interpret, which I'll look at. But the way this model works is if a building gets inundated, even a little bit, it turns bright red. So just right now, I'm actually looking at the. Uh, map, all for your apartment owner, you see just exactly what's going on here probably. And on roads, and the road's current pick is that it didn't do. And, uh, that will allow the road commissioner to, uh, know what to be looking for and how much is the inundation to expect. And I think I sent out copies.
Yep, yep.
For example, if you. It's got four basic parameters, uh, four foot and, uh, one and a half foot and twenty, twenty-three. And then, uh, four foot and eight, one eighty-four. Twenty-one, twenty-one, twenty. Many, many numbers, scenarios, you know, probability. And so, uh, what's, what's the county did was it prepared five scenarios that envelope the guidance of the state. And it's a simple matter of putting in the K M L file the next time, uh, C A I does an update. And they normally do their updates when they go to committed it. And we give them the data and so, um, I don't know what commitment, so that we have to fill it in. But the message is get the board's. Permission to, uh, provide a K M L file.
And we had a discussion about that. You want to share your?
Well, my only, the only thought I had is, are we gonna have people that get upset? Because these maps may show some degrading of value of their own properties. Uh, you know, like they're not, instead of the, let's be realistic side of it, they're looking at like, oh, yeah, now I can't sell my land because. The state or the town says I'm gonna be underwater in ten years or twenty years, and I, I don't know if, if people will think that way or they won't, I guess, and they might, but. Will people be mad at us for putting those on there? Or do we have any risk by providing that?
Selling property. Then I think in twenty years, your house is gonna be underwater.
In his public numbers, right? He, he put it beyond our, it is accessible, so it is public, so to me, it's not.
Yeah, I agree, we should, yeah.
And being public, the scenario. We, for, and be prepared for, to the two, two elements to it, and, um. The plan for part is what we're using for the car race. Uh, the prepare for is possibly a twenty percent probability, whereas the plan for is a fifty-fifty probability.
Yeah, I remember you showing us, um, at one of the meetings where. I mean, it really lit up red around some areas. Sure, uh, which is really interesting, um. I already put my house up for sale after I saw it.
And with that, uh, there are eleven buildings that are at risk that are ready. And we have, uh, ninety-nine feet of roadway that turns pink and is.
It's not just your yardage, yeah, yeah.
At three point nine feet. Uh, we get nine hundred ninety-two feet of road.
Wow.
That's the twenty-one twenty?
That's, that's the twenty-one hundred. Which is only seventy-five years from now. Now, because of the statistical.
It could happen next year.
That it's public knowledge, the fact that it's out there and, as you said. I, you know, wait till the town's alive because we didn't see the information that we knew about. Um, it seems like it might seem like to. People who don't know about it, they don't care. If you're inland, you probably don't care anyway. Um, and it would, selling their property, it, um, it would be up there, it would be depend, you know, it, it's up to the realtor to. To, to look at those kind of things and, um. You know, and for those who don't believe in climate change, it doesn't mean anything anyway. Freak anybody out then right away. They should already know, you know, you're in a zone, you got grandfathered. It's like the, the, the ferry landing house there, that, it's like, we know couldn't build a house there today. Um, but. Yeah, but, you know, we're all aware of it. Yeah. 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 We just keep moving the. Exactly, exactly.
So one thing that I'll point is a lot of those small cottages, non-conforming structures, don't have enough property with them currently. To be able to move back and rebuild, so, you know, I'd really like to avoid us becoming another Pine Point. I don't know if you're familiar with that in Southern Maine, but they get wiped out at least once a year, if not twice, and then their homes all get rebuilt. And then they get wiped out again and then they get rebuilt. It's like, it's ridiculousness. So, anyway, I'm just throwing that out there, that maybe in long-term planning, maybe we can work towards finding further back properties that can. Somehow, if something comes up for sale, this guy can buy this over here because it's, it's back further, you know, just a little bit of forethought on, you know.
On stilts. Pretty much, yeah, like they do in Louisiana, yep.
So this is a little side note, but. Um, I went over to St. George over the weekend and there is a home there that's for sale for two point four million dollars that is built on stilts. And it's on, it's called an island, but it has a causeway to it. Uh, and the drive. And the driveway goes across the causeway and then they park under the house. Anyway, big, beautiful home. Nobody's even looking at it. And when I got there, I'm like, yeah, now I see why. Like, anybody that thinks at all about sea level rise is going to look at that house and say, that's going to be a boat in 10 years. And, but it's a beautiful structure. Somebody put a lot of effort and money and time into building it, but it's has not much value right now. So
Are we okay with adding it to our
I'm good with it. Let me just mention the cost.
Okay, thank you. And it could be that they do it at the same time as a commitment and then there isn't a charge. All right, thanks, Anna. So I'd like to move that we um, accept the new layer on our G I S. All in favor?
Hi.
Hi. All right. So Dennis will work with you to, probably with either April or Ashley to, when that's ready to go. Great. Any other announcements or anything else? Okay. Oh, we got a town meeting this week. It's 10 o'clock.
You want me to make another presentation regarding the ordinances?
For Saturday? No, what we're thinking, what we're hoping is that we make no presentations. We did all the work. We're hoping that Article number one, everybody agree? Article number two, article number 50, we're done. So only if somebody asked a question specifically about that, but you know, we have cemetery and the different places looking at what's there. We already talked and we said we're not going to have a PowerPoint or anything else. We are going through that people sort of paid attention and, you know, came to some of those meetings or have looked at the warrant articles and are prepared. So you know, you know, we're going to be as optimistic as possible, but no.
One-page handouts that you add? Those would be handy to have and be prepared to answer some questions because somebody asked.
I think people have heard enough, especially about that building, that I think, I think you're probably in good shape. In fact, I feel like, you know, I don't know, how many people came to see you, Stacy, on Saturday?
And attitude was good?
So I don't know how many people went to the Jeff was there. Take over the lease on that, a long-term lease. So I'm hoping that that will, I feel like we've done whatever we could to sort of give people a heads up. So no, we're not planning any presentation. We won't have a PowerPoint or anything else. The staff will have you know, data if they need. So if you wanted the one pager that you all handed out before, you might have that there for those who haven't seen it. That might be a good thing to do. But other than that, I think we're as prepared as we can be. No ripe tomatoes, I hope. Too early.
Could I jump in?
Yes.
Yeah, we've got the leftovers we didn't hand out about the right house. So that will have those for Saturday. Not for everybody, but just if someone wants one, we've got that, that same page.
Do you know how many people showed up Saturday, Jeff?
Uh, one.
Oh, okay. Huge turnout. They were all busy at the fire station.
They did. I think the fire department got all the, all the action there, Stacy. I'm sorry, I missed it.
Yeah. Yeah, I think, I feel like because there's an option there, it's like, you know, either we spend money or we can, we can turn it over to, so I feel like that's a no-brainer. I think people don't get a chance to go into the fire station to see what that looks like. So I think that was really important. And, and you know, it is up on the website that, that the latest report. So I think that we've done what we could. And so
Wait, with one other point, the sound is really, really horrible. Do I sound bad in there?
Yeah, you, I, can you guys hear? Yeah, barely.
Okay, well, I think I'd recommend looking at the the device. It's not sometimes you sound okay, by you, I mean Donna and something else, but, but even, even when I can hear you guys often, it's garbled.
Yeah, I know Charlotte complains often. And I know when I've done it, had it be on Zoom, it never feels good. Yeah, I'll need to work on this a little bit because it looks like it's, your voice is coming out of the computer. It's not coming out of the owl. So something is not quite right there. So we'll, we'll work on that. So thank you for letting us know, Jeff. All right. With that, what I'd like to do is propose that we adjourn. Will I have a second? All in favor? Thank you all for coming.